Hello, neighbors. Thank you for joining us. My name is Tom Murphy and I'm pleased to be your town moderator. This is the moderators' warrant review and it's my chance to sort of go over the articles on the warrant for the next town meeting. Over the years, people have told me that this is helpful and so I'll continue to do so. Our next special town meeting is October 25th at 7:00 at the middle school, high school in the PAC. For the warrant review, usually I have the town manager as the chief executive and the chair of the finance committee as the official town meeting advisor to walk through this, but it's been a few months now we haven't had a town manager, so bear with me. With me is the chair of the finance committee, Mike Doherty, and he'll explain the finance committee's recommendations as well as the recommendations of other boards and committees. So before we get to the warrant, a quick COVID update. The Ipswich Public Health Director has approved using the PAC. We're not requiring, I'm not requiring masks, but recommend to people when not speaking use masks and for those who haven't gotten vaccinated, obviously to get vaccinated. So as for the warrant for this meeting, we have 12 articles, but it will really feel like 18, and I'll tell you why in a second. The first four are routine items, though the amounts of money in each is higher than normal. The next one is a clerical article to make the text of the zoning bylaws gender neutral. Six and seven are to authorize a lease and establish a revolving fund. Eight and nine are multi-part zoning matters which I will divide up. Under our bylaw, I'm required to follow the town meeting time, which is a procedural's manual, and it says that moderators should divide a question without waiting for a motion, quote, "if it serves some constructive or valuable purpose." Now zoning bylaws can be kind of gnarly and if they are bunched together, it gets kind of confusing. So it seems to me to be constructive and valuable to handle them one at a time. So we'll do Article 9, which has three parts in three different pieces. And Article 9 has five parts and we'll do them in pieces, so take them in baby steps with the presentation, debate, and vote independently, as if they were separate articles. And then the last two articles are 11 and 12 are questions to change the town charter. One, have the select board review and approve all town employee contracts, and the other would put the ELD, the Electrical Light Department, under the auspices of the town manager.
And number 10, town meeting date.
I skipped one, yeah, town meeting date, thank you. So just as a reminder, folks, that articles in the warrant are just that, they're subject matters, they're not the motions. We don't vote on articles. And more importantly, once the warrant is published, we never, ever amend articles. We make or amend motions, not articles. Because I often hear people on boards and committees say, "Oh, we'll amend the article at town meeting." No, you won't. It is what it is. You either make one motion or another. So the trick is if the positions changed, and I think some of these, they will change from what the article reads, you put that change into the motion, and we'll show you how to do that. So let's start off with Article 1, Michael. Tell us about that. The state budget is now in final form and it looks like we're getting additional local aid.
That's right. Welcome and thank you for inviting me, Tom, to this forum. It's always useful for the townspeople of Ipswich. I just do want to make one note is that on a lot of these, you're going to see that the vote of the finance committee was six to zero, and that's because three members were absent during our warrant hearing. So with that being said, Article 1, the state finalized their budget and it looks like they gave additional state aid, UGA, local aid. And it looks like we're going to be getting roughly around $360,000. So what this article does is to take that money and put it into an account or multiple accounts, because when you receive state aid, you can't, you need it to go somewhere. It has to be designated. It can't just go into free cash or, you know, whatever on a whim. It has to be allocated to a specific account. So in this recommendation, it is put forth with the article that $310 go into free cash and $50,000 go into a management transfer account. When the finance committee was doing our warrant hearing, what we recommended was because you can't take 310 and put it into free cash, like I mentioned earlier, it has to go to a specific account, we recommended that the entirety of the 360 go into an account, reserve account, or an account that the finance committee has the authority to release funds for. And the reason why is because $360,000 is a decent amount of money. And as committee members, we need to do our due diligence and make sure that we are getting the highest and best use of those tax dollars. So we believe that it made sense to have those funds be part of the larger discussion of next year's budgeting process, so that way we can really tackle the things that we need, not necessarily the things that we want. So how do you do that? You need to get that state money and you need to carry it over into next year. And like I said, it has to be allocated to a specific account. So if you allocate it to an account and it doesn't get spent, at the end of the year, it then flows into free cash. So that way, when you discuss next year's budgeting process, you have that additional money in free cash to utilize from. So then we said, well, what account do we put it in? We decided to put it in, or recommend to put it into an account that has the highest level of transparency and that has the discretion of multiple people, not just one. So by putting it into this transfer account, basically how it would work is in order for those funds to be spent, it would have to be during an open meeting, publicly posted meeting. You would need to have a majority vote from the finance committee, and then that's how it would work. So basically, we would say that the money from the state would go into this account. It would sit there, and when the year is over, it would flow into free cash. And then when we talk about next year's budgeting process in a few months, we'll have $360,000 of additional money to use for that process.
So getting back to the warrant, people look at the warrant and they say, "It looks like the question at town meeting is going to be whether to raise and appropriate $360,000, $50,000 to go to the management transfer account, and 310 to free cash." The problem with that, and this is an error in, and it happens from time to time when they write the warrant, free cash is not an account. It's not a bucket to put money in. Free cash is a revenue source that results from calculation at the end of the fiscal year, the beginning of the fiscal year, of the town's remaining unrestricted funds from its operations in previous fiscal year based on the balance sheet at the end of June. So it sounds like what you're saying is you want them to put all of it into, or $50,000 into the management transfer account and the balance into this reserve account and the reserve--
Actually, we recommended all of it, yeah. And the only reason why is because I pulled the numbers prior to our meeting, and there's already $74,000 in the management transfer account.
So then the way that would work, logistically, and it depends on what the select board wants to do.
Right.
If they take the, there are two options. One is, and I don't know what their motion is going to be, I think that their motion is going to be to put $50,000 into the management transfer account and $310,000 into the trust account, excuse me, the excess, reserve fund, excuse me. Reserve fund, just say no, under state law is set up for these, some of these situations where a town could put up to 5% of its levy, and this is well under that, into an account that can be appropriated and transferred from time to time by a vote of the finance committee.
Which has been done recently, actually. There was a time a couple of years ago--
It's often done, yeah.
Remember when we were doing the, we had additional legal fees when we were doing the fire engine debacle, they, at the end of the year, they needed additional $35,000 or $40,000. They took it from this fund, so something like that.
But before we get into the substance of where money should and should not go, I'm speaking just to the pragmatics and the logistics of the motion practice. It's the main motion that starts things off. Remember, we don't vote on articles, we vote on motions. So the select board will either move to put $50,000 in the management transfer and 310 into this reserve fund, or perhaps they'll take your advice and put the whole thing in.
Right.
If they don't, then it will be on you, if you'd like, to make a motion to amend it.
Right.
But my point is if they agree with you and if some of these other articles that have inarticulate motions to date, the better practice is to get the motion right to begin with, because I often hear people on boards and committees saying, "Well, we'll make the motion and then we'll amend our motion." And that's silly.
Right.
You wouldn't do that. You wouldn't amend your own motion. So Article 2 is similarly additional state funds only for the school budget. This is under Chapter 70, which is part of the general laws that gives local aid to schools.
Right.
And this is another three, almost $575,000 in additional Chapter 70 money.
That's right. The legislature, at the beginning of their budgeting process, which is around the April timeframe, they expressed how they would like to increase the per people amount for Chapter 70 support, which is money specifically for schools, as Tom had mentioned. And with that, the school committee, when they were going through their budgeting process and when they were going through their override calculations, they predicted that the school was going to get a little bit more. They didn't know how much, but they knew it was going to be more. So with this being the case, the budget was finalized. The legislature came to an agreement that the town of Ipswich was going to get an additional almost $575,000 of Chapter 70 funding, and the school will be using that to appropriate to their account and fund things that they, that the school committee chair will mention at town meeting.
Okay, Article 3 and 4 are similarly increasing under 3 and reducing under 4 the budgets for the two regional schools under 3, Essex Tech, and 4, Whittier Regional, and they're both additional state funds that will go into those.
So, right, so for those of you that don't know, we as a community are responsible for funding part of the budgets for Essex Tech and Whittier Regional, and it's based off of some formulas, the amount of students, et cetera. And what happens is, is we don't know what the number's going to be until the fall when enrollment is finalized for students. So when we're doing our budget process in May, we don't know the number, but we can estimate. And so what we do at the special town meeting is we correct those estimates if we owe money or if we get money, and not get money in return, but don't have to spend as much money. And in Essex Tech's case, we actually owe a little money. We owe about $13,000 more. We allotted $335,000 and we owe $348,000. And in Whittier's case, we actually don't have to spend as much money. We allocated $590,000 and we only owe $476,000. So that's about $113,000 that we don't have to spend. So when you look at those two articles, because those, believe it or not, actually come from the town side of the municipal, the municipal budget, they don't come from the school side. But when you look at those two articles from what we owe and what we don't have to spend, it's roughly about $100,000 in the positive that we don't have to spend this year, which is good news.
So those four articles, 1, 2, 3, and 4 are stock articles for most special town meetings we have in the fall. They're a little unusual this year, 1, because Article 1 was miswritten, but more than that, these 1 and 2 are much higher than they normally are.
That's absolutely true.
Okay, let's go on. Article 5 is a clerical matter. It's to change Board of Selectmen to Select Board in various provisions of the zoning bylaw. That'll probably pass unanimously, so there won't be much time on that. Article 6 is to authorize a 20-year lease. Now, there's a lease for wireless communication services on the water tank on Ploover Hill Road, and that expires in February. And it brings in about, last count, about $34,000 for the Open Space Recreation and Water Supply Protection Fund. And this action under this article would extend that lease by some period of time, I imagine, another 20-year lease.
Well, so it wouldn't extend the lease, it would, we have to go put out an RFP and accept--
Authorize renewal of it.
Exactly. So this would basically allow the select board to go put out a new bid and we would get people, I'm sure AT&amp;T, which is the current leasing, would be interested and want to give us an offer, but this just authorizes the select board to do that.
Right. Okay, Article 7 is establishing a fund for, a revolving fund for $17,000 mitigation fee collected by the Conservation Commission from a certain real estate broker, developer. So what was the vote on this?
Well, this is, this is a little interesting, and I just need a minute to explain this. So we are at a very interesting time this year with the lack of a town manager and a finance director. And we didn't, as a finance committee, have all the information prior to our warrant hearing necessary to make a well-informed recommendation, so we ultimately voted against it. However, since that warrant hearing, and we will actually have another presentation at our October 11th meeting at 7:30 at the Town Hall, we discovered that this is more clerical and a little more routine than usual. And what I mean by that is there was a certain instance where the town is owed about $17,000, and the only way that we can get that is if we create another bucket, as you mentioned earlier.
And this was for mitigation for--
A particular property.
--property on Water Street after the fire.
Exactly, exactly. And so in order for the town to accept those funds from this individual, we need to have an account for them to go into. This isn't going to be like the beach sticker account where we constantly add money to it to help, you know, have expenses for the boardwalk or the parking lot, et cetera. This is a one-time deal, we just need to create it in order to accept the funds. So most likely, at town meeting, my board will recommend unanimously in support of it.
Okay. And what did the select board have to say about this?
The select board were unanimously in favor of this.
Okay. Article 8 is the first of two fairly lengthy zoning articles. And Article 8 has three different parts, so we'll take them in order. Let's look at Part 1. Action under this part of Article 1 would lower the permissible number of units built within the Water Supply Protection District and prohibit encumbrances associated with the built portion of the Open Space Protection Zone. And what was the finance committee's recommendation on this?
So, this is interesting, because unfortunately, we get into situations where sometimes too much information gets put under one article, as you had mentioned earlier in your opening statement.
But let's just stick with Part 1.
Well, so that's the thing, we don't have individual votes for each of the parts. That's what I mean.
All right.
You know, it's one of those things where you either vote it all down or you vote it all to support.
Okay. So you didn't vote in parts, the way we're going to take them?
You got it.
So do you have a memory generally of what the sentiment was up or down on the first part?
So ultimately, all three of these parts were supported unanimously. There were some questions back and forth, lengthy discussions, as there always are when it comes to zoning issues. But for the most part, the finance committee, the select board, and the planning board were all unanimously in favor for Article 8.
For the first part of Article 8?
Or all--
In its entirety.
Okay.
All right. Then I'll just explain. Then the second part of Article 8 is action under this part would amend the table of use regulations in the zoning bylaw to allow retail and personal and consumer service establishments by right in the PC district. And if you don't know what the PC district is, I didn't either until I looked it up in the zoning bylaw, and it's the Planned Commercial District. But that's the second part. And the third part, action under the third part would add a definition of the drive-through facility to the bylaw and also amend the table of use regulations by creating new accessory use for drive-through facilities to only be allowed in the PC, the Planned Commercial or the HB district, which is the highway business. There are actually 12 different districts in the bylaw if you look at them. So those are the three parts for that. And again, I would encourage them to break these out in the future, as we're going to do this time. And if Article 8 with three parts seemed congested, Article 9 has five parts.
Yes.
And the first part would redefine the term lot area. And I know that when you, this, again, things evolve. And since the warrant hearings, and so folks know, the finance committee is the only one that's really required to have a warrant hearing. The selectmen do, and we're welcome, we're delighted to hear from them, but they don't have to.
That's right.
The school committee doesn't, the zoning, but they don't have to. The zoning board does have to have a public hearing on any zoning matter that comes before town meeting. And in fact, if it hasn't, moderator's not supposed to even honor it.
Right.
Or take it up.
And by the way, Tom, a lot of people don't understand this, but the finance committee doesn't just review financially related articles, we are required to review all of the articles and give a recommendation.
To that, that's a good point. In fact, the finance committee is often named the warrant committee, it's often named the advisory committee in different towns, and for that very reason, by bylaw here, but in some towns it's not the same, there to advise on everything, from zoning to finance to everything.
Which can get challenging, because we're not all zoning experts. So we try to utilize our recommendation based off the information given to us.
Right. And, yeah, that's a good point. I hear a lot of the talk from some of these boards and committees and commissions that, well, the people are coming to us and telling us this. The way it's to work is that the legislation that comes from is based on the professionals and their expertise, it goes, and then it's whether town meeting wants to approve it or not.
Right.
Because if they come forth with only what people say, then you're only listening to the loudest people. So the first part of Article 9 is to amend the lot area. The second part would amend the table of dimensional and density regulations to change the maximum floor area ratio for buildings. And I take it you folks voted on these in total or not in parts?
In total. This one had a little more discussion, but in total, we voted unanimously to support it. I will say that from what I remember at the hearing, we weren't in favor of Section 1, we were in favor of 2 and 3, we wanted to amend 4, and we were in favor of 5. And this is why it makes sense to break this up and not just do it under 1, because they are, even though they're all zoning, they are relatively different things.
Right. Well, as to the first one, as of now, I understand that the proposal is going to be to move to amend the lot area, not as written in the warrant, leaving the 70% figure there, but adding the word contiguous, so that buildings must be designated contiguous land area, which, as I say, you know, may not be the way it actually comes out. And if folks are wondering about that, it gets back to the difference between an article and a motion. Under our bylaw, the motions that we act on, what's called the main motion, are not due to the moderator until three business days before the meeting. So for a Tuesday town meeting, that means they have to be in final form on Thursday before, which is the 20th, 22nd, something, so the Thursday before the October 25th, and that's still a couple of weeks out. And as we talk to various people, they change their position.
And that's why the motions will not be in your, in your finance committee book that you receive in the mail.
Right. So I'll just finish with the rest of Article 9. Part 3 affects the building height in different districts. Part 4, tandem parking, and Part 5 defines the term multifamily residential development.
And again, all three boards, the finance committee, select board, and planning were in favor of Article 9 unanimously.
Okay. So Article 10 is another article that has curious wording, because I watched the presentation at the select board on it. The way it's worded is, it's the proposal in Article 10 is to change the date of the annual town meeting. In Ipswich, our annual town meeting, which is the only town meeting that the state requires us to have, and it has to be sometime between March 1st and June 30th. In our bylaw, it says it's the second Tuesday in May. And the way the article is written is to change the wording of the bylaw so that it's on a date at any time, no later than May 15th, which means it could be anytime in March, April, or the first half of May.
Right.
So one way to solve that problem, if they really just wanted to have it sometime in the first two weeks of May, is to rewrite the motion and not say, "I moved the article," say, "I moved the article, but to change the first clause of Section A to mean town meetings shall begin in the first 15 days of May." That way, they do what they want, and it may or may not pass, may get amended, that's fine, but that would be the way to solve that.
So the finance committee actually opposed this article unanimously. And the reason why is because, as you can imagine, a lot goes into preparing for these town meetings and certain deadlines need to be met. For example, the finance committee book needs to be in the hands of the residents one week prior to the meeting, and before that, we have to have enough time to ship it, and before that, we have to have enough time to print it, and before that, we have to have enough time to draft it. So one issue that the finance committee had was by having it be a variable date that is on the whim of the select board on an annual basis, we're afraid that we're going to get ourselves into a situation where things are going to be moving, we're going to have moving targets, and we're not going to have set deadlines.
Well, on that, I mean, let me ask you, I mean, are there other milestones in the calendar year? Is there a timeline of sort of the municipal government, other than the timing of the FinCom report? Are there other times that things come out?
No.
No?
No, there's not. I mean, as you mentioned, annual town meeting is the only town, is the only one that we have to have by law, and it's before the next fiscal year. We have ours around the May timeframe, because that's when we get our best estimates from the state on what their budgets are going to look like, and it gives us time to properly vet all of the departments in our community on what their budgets are going to look like. But there is no other set date except for town meeting. And then really, town meeting, we work around that. So we work around with our FinCom book, we work around bean counting with that, so it's in an appropriate timeframe, and then we usually work backwards and we establish our budget hearings in a timely manner prior to that. And so our fear is that by having it as it is, by only having a deadline of no later than May 15th, like you had mentioned, the select board one year could say, "Oh, we want to have it April 12th." So maybe a solution is to have a range, but we don't want the range to be too great where we get ourselves into a situation where we move the date last minute, where things happen last minute, where we aren't able to meet our obligations.
Now, the other thing, just reading this here, the way it's written is the change would be the annual town meeting of the town shall be held on a date and time no later than May 15th. The unarticulated assumption is that the town meeting is only one night.
That's a good point.
What if it goes for four nights?
That's a great point.
And it could go into, you know, it could go to the next night, or it could go to the following week.
Right.
So that's something to think about.
And, you know, I will say though, I understand the intention of this. This is so that we have flexibility. And now more than ever is a time where we saw the need for flexibility with the global pandemic. Luckily, we had emergency orders provided by the state that allowed us to move our town meeting.
Those are emergencies, right.
Exactly. So maybe--
What I heard was that the motive behind this is to allow for a Saturday meeting.
And that could be the possibility.
And I can tell you that I've talked to other moderators in towns, they're roughly 50/50, they go back and forth.
I'm sure.
They, some do Tuesday nights, some do Wednesday nights.
Right.
Some do Saturdays, and it catches catch can. There's no real rhyme or reason.
So maybe there is a solution where you have a range of a week, or maybe you have a start and an end deadline date, or what have you. But I think ultimately, it needs to have a little more thought and needs to be reworked before we can get it in front of the people of town meeting for a vote, which is why we unanimously opposed it.
Okay. So the last two proposed charter changes, and these are both through the same vehicle. Article 11-- Article 11 would amend the town charter to require the Select Board to review and approve all town employee contracts. And it would do so by petitioning the state legislature, which is why it's a simple majority and not a two-thirds vote. There is a way to amend your town charter, and it's a much more cumbersome way and it would require a two-thirds vote. So this is typically the way Ipswich has amended its charter, by petitioning the legislature. So this one would change, would bring all employee contracts before the Select Board. And how many are we talking about?
As of right now, I believe there are five, non-union contracts, by the way. Because obviously, there are union entities that they, that they go in negotiations with. But individual contracts, there's five.
So the town manager, the treasurer-
Town manager, the treasurer-
Police chief.
Police chief, fire chief.
The fire chief, is that, okay.
And I believe, there is a fifth one, I'm not sure if it's the assessor or-
The finance director?
No, not the finance director. But there are five.
Maybe the assessor, okay.
There are five and this would make it so that the Select Board basically have the ultimate say and the ultimate sign-off, which, you know, in theory, you would think as the elected officials, the executive body, the ones that are kind of the top of the pyramid scheme here, is that they would be the ones that would have the ultimate say. They're like the board of directors for the town, for example, whereas the town manager is the CEO. This article would make it so that all of the contracts be reviewed and approved by the Select Board.
Right. And so what was the vote on that?
Unanimous in favor, the Finance Committee.
And the last one is-
The Select Board, obviously unanimously in favor.
Right. And the last, Article 12, is amend the town charter to replace the electric light department under the direct supervision of the town manager.
Right.
And this has generated quite a bit of discussion.
It has. And for those of you who are unaware, how it works right now is you have a manager of the electric light department that answers to the commissioners. And in Ipswich's case, the commissioners are the Select Board. And the Select Board manages the manager. What the Select Board would like to do is make it so that the town manager manages the manager that manages the ELD. And the Finance Committee's concern with this was the fact that are you having two people now do the same job? Are you forcing one person out of a job? And who was consulted before making this decision? We are lucky enough in town to have some people who have served town government in many different capacities continuing to serve town government. And a few of them stood up at our warrant hearing and expressed concern that they weren't even approached and that they weren't in favor for various reasons. So the Finance Committee took a look and said, you're going through the process of changing the charter, which is like in effect, changing the town's constitution. It's not like it's a bylaw that has a little easier process of changing. That this should be really thought out methodically on what are the right steps here to solve an issue, if there is one to be solved. Which in some people's argument, there isn't a problem to be solved. So the Finance Committee unanimously opposed this article.
Okay.
As a result.
So those are the 12, but really the 18 articles that we will make motions under, perhaps amend motions, but certainly debate at the October 25th town meeting. So thank you very much for joining us and I'll see you at town meeting.
Thank you.